Okay, good afternoon. We're calling this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Fairfax Town Council on July 1st, and specifically to discuss the American Rescue Plan. And Michelle, would you start us out with a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Goddard.
I'm here.
Councilmember Cutrone.
Present.
Councilmember Kohler.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Here.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do we need to do the approval of agenda? Affidavit for posting? Okay, if I could get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion Kohler, second Cutrone, and if you would do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Ackerman.
Yes. I would guess the next thing that we would go into would be maybe a staff report, and then we, your public comment at some point before we finish discussing this.
Mayor, just, I'm sorry to interrupt. I noticed that Michael Bibbret, our finance manager, is on as an attending, not as a panelist, so.
Oh, okay. Michelle, I believe you could move him over.
I'm, yes, I'm, I'm working on it.
Garrett, you want to start us off?
Sure. So I think Michelle had previously sent you kind of this worksheet for the workshop. I've since updated it, but in essence, it's just a guide of proposed allocations, how things could possibly work. But the main thing to think about for this workshop is the towns consider a non-entitlement unit under the federal law, which just means how we get the money. And so we get the money actually in two tranches. One is in July. I guess now we're in July, but sometime this month, we'll get the first half, which is $900,000. And then 12 months later, July 2022, you'll get the other $900,000. So the workshop today, what we're, I'm proposing or recommending is you just talk about the $900,000 you're going to be getting in July. And then when you get the next $100,000, you'll have time within your budget approval process to kind of either have another workshop or do it within the budget process to figure out how to spend that next $900,000 of the money. And so that's kind of the thought pattern. And then what I thought I would do is just kind of talk about the restrictions, limitations, or requirements as we understand it. And so this money is all kind of forward thinking. So pretty much it's only eligible expenses prior or after March 3rd, 2021. So that's March 3rd of this year. Anything you're spending after March 3rd, that's an eligible expense. Anything that you spent before then, if you actually spent it and paid for it, that's not eligible. You can qualify for lost revenue, and we'll touch on that because we think we actually do qualify for lost revenue. What that means when you qualify for lost revenue, you could actually use it for a variety of other things that you typically couldn't use the funds for, but you still can only use it for certain things. Pretty expensive, won't be a problem for us, but there are some limitations. And so I talked about when you'll get the money, July of this year, probably July of next year. And in essence, for the funds, there's generally four eligible use categories. So one is public health, negative economic impacts, and that's all we do related to COVID. There's essential workers, you could do premium pay, whether it's governmental or non-governmental, third party, it's premium pay. There's revenue losses, we just talked about. And then you could use the infrastructure, but only water, sewer, and broadband. So those are really the four eligible categories. Now, one of the things they do have in there is you can pay for public safety, but you have to meet a threshold that 50% of that person's time in public safety is related to some kind of COVID-19 type activity, which is different from the CARES Act. The CARES Act had a presumption, public safety was eligible. So that's probably going to rule out paying for public safety. Another one of the things is you have to obligate the funding by December 31st, 2024. You know, whatever, a little more than three years ago, three years from now, and you actually have to spend it by 2024, December 31st, 2024. Question?
Stephanie, you're muted.
Sorry, I had a, there was a horn outside honking, so I had to unmute. And the public safety that you just described, 50% of the person has to be something COVID-related, is that what you said?
Yes.
What if it's, so it has to be funding like a human resource, if you will? Public safety?
Yes. Yeah, public safety is a body in public safety, whether it's police or fire. And 50% of their time is dedicated specifically to some type of COVID-19-related activity.
Okay, so that would, that would, could, or I guess let me frame it as a question, could that be mental health expenditure? Or does that go more toward the public health category?
That's more toward the public health category. The mental health is eligible, but it wouldn't be under public safety.
I was, I was wondering about the, the, in the early days of COVID, the police and fire both spent a lot of time setting up protocols, getting PPE, getting everybody trained, because the both, both departments were being exceedingly careful when they went on calls. So was there a period of time there in which, say, the police chief was spending 50% of their time reacting quickly to COVID?
So one thing to keep in mind, when I said it's expenses after March 3rd, 2021. Anything you did prior to March 2021, it doesn't matter. That's not eligible. So you're not eligible for any reimbursement. It's going forward, or since March, do you actually have someone spending 50% of their time specifically related to COVID-19?
But lost revenues are in an earlier period of time. They're during the COVID.
It is. And we'll talk about lost revenues, but you got to remember, not everything, not, not everything's going to be consistent in terms of the thinking. And so we'll talk about how we calculated the lost revenue, because we actually used a spreadsheet prepared by the sales tax consultant that we put in some rough numbers, and we'll talk about that, about why we believe we have lost revenue. But it's clear you cannot use it to reimburse any costs prior to March 2021. That's perfectly clear.
Okay.
Okay. So I think it's, okay, you have to obligate the funding by December 31st, 2024, and you actually have to spend it all by December 31st, 2026. So five years, a little more than five years. Yeah, annual reporting requirements. Now, for us non-entitlement units, it's just once a year. Every, by the end of October, we have to report annually. You do it online. I've already submitted, what's the best way to describe it? Already registered online, so we'll get our money. So that's, that's relatively easy. How it works, yes?
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, okay. And then how it works is you don't have anybody to talk to about whether this is eligible or that is eligible. Pretty much, every October, you're putting in all your information and making an argument of why you believe an expense is eligible. And then presumably it'll be like FEMA ultimately at the end. Maybe you get audited, maybe you don't. They'll ask for information. If you have it all well documented, probably not a problem. If you don't, maybe that's a problem. But that's why in the budget, we set up the new Fund 25. That's where all your expenses will be logged in, in the budget. And so in the budget, just to point out as a separate thing, in the budget, we have Fund 25. Within that, we put $900,000, and in the budget, it shows as revenue, $900,000. In the budget itself, we actually don't put the appropriation, like how you're going to allocate the 900. We're just going to recommend you just do that separately, because we actually try to input that into the budget. Or one is, that would take some time, because it's going to run through all the different sheets and factors, and all of a sudden, your budget's going to go from 18.2 million to 19.1. And then that's going to warrant more explanation, a changing of the budget message, trying to make sure people aren't, you're doing apples to apples. So we're saying, just keep it out of there. It's in there as revenue. You'll prove it as appropriations. So you'll have that. It just won't be in the actual adopted budget that's going to go to you in July.
I have a clarifying question, two of them. So are you saying in Fund 25, we're not going to have line items beneath it as far as what's being spent against that fund?
So what we're recommending is, yes, in Fund 25, you show the revenue, but for the appropriations, you could have it on the bottom sheet, but it's just not going to run through the budget. It could be appendices of how you want to allocate the funding, but we're not going to actually run it right through all the budget pages, because then that's going to make your budget 19.1 million. And pretty much any analysis that we've done, any descriptions and narratives, technically, they'll just be inaccurate or confusing for anyone looking at it. But the, how you're going to allocate it, that could be appendices or a sheet to the budget. But that presumes that today you'll actually agree, because you actually don't have to decide how you spend all that.
Right. Like summary, it could be a living document if you were, well, I, as I understand you just explained, so every October, we submit how we are going to spend.
You actually submit how you spent it. So you'll.
Sent it.
Yes. Not how you're going to allocate it. It's how you, it's how you spent it, because ultimately, they just want to know you spent it all by, well, they want to know you obligated by whatever, three years from now, but ultimately, you have to spend it within five years. So obviously, the portal's not open yet, so.
Is there a submission for that?
I have no idea. I, literally, I have no idea. You won't know until October. If there is, then you could put it in there. If there isn't, it's just how you spent, spent it, then that's all you would put. But.
Are they expecting that we'll have plans, concrete plans for the 1.8 by October?
No. You just, you just need to have.
2024, right?
Yeah.
That line.
Yes. By December 31st, 2024, you actually need a plan for all of it. Unless you've already spent all of it, then it doesn't really matter, because you spent it all.
Yeah. And it's a use it or lose it, right? I presume we would.
Yes. I just, I would assume you would use it on something.
Of course. Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right. So that's, that's kind of the limitations, regulations, and so on. And so in the spreadsheet that we had given to you, and I can put it on the screen too, if you like, is we have something that's called loss revenue. So the best way to describe that is, what they tell you is, the fiscal year before COVID, which is 1819, is your base year that you use to calculate if you believe you're going to have lost revenue. What they allow you to do is you can go back three years prior to 1819 and calculate your annual revenue growth over that timeframe. And so over the three-year period, if your revenue growth is greater than 4.1%, you could use adding your projections to calculate your actual loss. If it's less than 4.1, you could just use 4.1. That's the magic number that they use in the Treasury guidelines. So what we determine just preliminarily, because Michael and I just did this last night, is we figured out, or according to the spreadsheet calculations, that over the three-year period, whatever, prior to 1819, or maybe includes 1819. But anyway, the three-year period that you're allowed to calculate, looks like we had growth of about 6%. So what happens is you straight-line project that, you come up with a number, then you compare it to your revenue as of 2020, or June, June 2020, June, June 2020, I think, or maybe it's December 2020. Anyway, whatever the number is, we calculated it, and we believe that we can document revenue loss of probably at least 250,000. That's very preliminary. It's lower than what we think it could be, but we have to go back and check our revenue numbers, because revenue cannot include any federal dollars that you got. If the federal dollars rolled through the state, you can't count that. So things like grant money for the bridges or any capital projects, you can't count that as, as revenue. So the only thing we have to check, I think, on our end for federal revenue would be the COPS grant, that we get from PD or officers, because that's actually, I believe, comes from the federal government, rolls through the state, comes to us. So we might have to adjust for that. But basically, we believe we can document about 250,000 of lost revenue. What that mean?
I was, what, what did you say over that three-year period? You say 6%?
Yes.
Was our, was, I'm sorry, what is the 6% relevant to? I wasn't clear on that.
The 6% is the total revenue growth year to year. So if I, let's see, let me see if I have this up. Okay, yeah.
So, so is, is the 250 conservative estimate, because you're not, is it, or does it exactly equate to the 6%? Are you, like, did you take it down because you're not so sure about the COPS grant, et cetera, or?
Yes. Yeah, because last night, we're just putting in broad revenue numbers of what we believe to be eligible. But we may have included some federal money, like the COPS grant. So that's why, I think, according to the screen, you know, maybe the number was 266,000, but we're saying 250 to account for some adjustments. But to answer the question, the 6% annual growth is a growth between revenues received in fiscal year 1516 through fiscal year 1718.
Well, wait a minute. That's only two years.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. So 1819.
What is the revenue growth?
Okay. So I, I don't want to get into much detail here, because we're just going to get lost in it. But we did the analysis, maybe I'm not describing it properly, but basically, fiscal year 201516 through fiscal year 1819, the revenue growth was about 6%.
Okay.
Subject to going through and entering the numbers, line item by line item, which we did not have time to do.
Does that, so any TAM money, is that money that's coming through the state or the feds? Do, so that doesn't count, right?
No, it counts for revenue.
Counts towards this, but it's not the money that we have to take away, right?
Right. It's not considered federal money. So federal money, whatever, however you want to, it doesn't, if you get the federal money in local state, you just can't count it.
Okay. So it's just basically the bridge money, and we think the COPS grant is federal? And maybe any other road money that we got that came from Caltrans that is actually federal money for some of those repairs we did and stuff?
Uh, I don't know if we did, but if we did, I'm not, we're not counting it anyway.
Okay. We got FEMA money for some of those road repairs for the storm stuff.
Right. So that's, that's not in there. Any capital money, we didn't get. But anyway, the, the main thing, the main point that I think we want to make is, we believe we qualify for some type of loss revenue category, whether it's 250 or 220 or 260. That remains to be refined. But, so what does that mean? Your annual, so when you get annual loss revenue, so you get that money, but that money actually has some limitations tied to it. Okay? You can use it clearly for infrastructure. And so in this year's budget, you know, we have about 660,000 worth of capital expenses. They're actually being funded by the general fund. So you have a category to take that money and use it for capital. And so when you do that, that frees up that portion of the general fund money that you thought you'd have to use from capital, you're not going to have to use it anymore. So that just makes your fund balance higher.
Did you, excuse me, did you say 600,000?
Yeah, 660,000 in the fiscal year 2122 budget, is about 660,000 is in general fund. One-time general fund revenue is going to fund capital projects.
And just one question, Garrett. So the lot, the money that, so if we can justify this lost revenue, even though the only infrastructure you can spend this money on is water, sewer, and broadband, you're saying that because this is lost revenue, that if we can justify that 250 or whatever it is, then we have 250 that we can take off the top from the 660 and use that for something else?
Yes, because the infrastructure requirements under ARP, or water, sewer, and broadband, don't apply to lost revenue.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. That was confusing to me. Okay.
So lost revenue, you can also use it for public safety too, but you, you have your capital projects. So I think the bottom line is, you have eligible uses probably three or four times more than what you're actually going to receive. So that's not going to be issued from a qualification eligibility standpoint. Okay. Any other questions on that?
We're not proceeding with assuming that's going to just be the case necessarily, right? We'll have some discussion in terms of allocating all of it to the infrastructure.
Yeah. The only reason I'm, I'm just saying infrastructure is that that is the clearest thing. So you don't need to futz with any eligibility. It frees up that portion of the general fund, and you could use general fund money then for anything else, because that's not restricted. That's, that's the only thing, that's the only thing I'm saying. I'm saying, when you fill it out, you'll say actual revenue. If the number's 250, you'll say you'll spend it on infrastructure, then you're good. You don't need to say justify anything else. That's fine. Then what you substituted, then the general fund revenue that you substituted for the lost revenue, you can use that for whatever you'd like.
So I just want to be clear, because I'm looking at a deck from the Vegas City. So when you say infrastructure, you're talking about water, sewer, broadband?
No.
No, anything. Clearly, in the regs, it says this, lost revenue, that's its own category. If you get that, you could spend it on these things, not subject to the rescue plan restrictions for infrastructure. You could spend it on other building, new infrastructure, not subject to water, sewer, or broadband limitations.
Sorry.
Right. So that's, and you could spend on other stuff too, but that's the easiest thing. That's pretty easy to identify.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Probably move down this, this spreadsheet here.
So in, in the spreadsheet, the only thing in the budget that actually identifies the source of the American Rescue Plan is storm drain, pollution control improvements. That was $100,000, because that's, that's eligible. So that's the only thing in the budget that we actually reference to the, to these monies, to the state and local recovery fund monies. So that's local.
Can I ask a question about that allocation? Just throw it out there. Maybe we don't have to deliberate on it now. But I know that those two plates on Broadway are covering a storm drain that's in horrible deterioration, which I was told was very expensive, and I'm guessing that's more than 100,000. I also know that we're getting close to a deadline on storm drain improvements from the state. So I'm wondering why you just threw out there 100,000 when probably that one storm drain is going to cost more than that.
So the 100, so the revised spreadsheet, I get to Broadway.
I have the original, but did you send out the revised one?
No.
No, I, I didn't, because I thought people might get confused. So, but I have a revised one, but it's about the same, although I have a separate line item for storm drain improvements on Broadway. The 100,000 for storm drain pollution control, that's to meet the state guidelines for having the pollution control devices in all the storm drains.
Okay.
So that, that's to handle the state. It's a different line item to handle storm drain improvements related to Broadway and the collapse storm drain. So that's, so on Broadway, there are plates, and that's related to a collapsed storm drain. What we have to do is, we have to figure out is if we can abandon the storm drain, or if we need to keep it. We need to keep it. Obviously, we need to fix it. And if we can abandon it, then we just fill it. And then we can fix the sinkhole where the plates are at. So that estimate for that work in a vacuum is probably more like $30,000. That's kind of what we're thinking. But.
That's all?
That's, yeah. But that's a placeholder. You, you kind of don't know until you actually decide. And that's based on if we could fill it. I guess if we have to fix it, it would probably be more.
Well, that's, I'm, I mean, okay, so I don't want to belabor this right now, but I really do think those plates have been there for a couple of years. I think rather than the idea of abandoning it, we ought to, for purposes of filling out this spreadsheet, assume we have to fix it and put in a more realistic figure, because that is not a safe situation like that. And I, I think that it's been there a year or two, and I don't think it's a good idea to just keep shoveling it down on the list. Particularly if it does collapse completely, we then are in a hurry-up mode. So I would prefer that we have at least a rough estimate of what that is to fix it and actually look at it at some point. Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we're all like in lockstep here, and I'm wondering if it makes sense for you to share your screen, Garrett? Because I always want to make sure I'm putting in the right numbers as we go on my.
Okay. Let's see, where's it, here we go. Can you see that?
Yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. So storm drain, down here is storm drain repairs and improvement. We could talk about that more later. So homeless case management, that's a county-wide effort. That's actually going to go to you on July 7th. Our share, based on population, is $33,000, and that's for a homeless case, case management over a three, five-year period. The next item, and I thought I'd just zip through these quickly, just kind of tell you roughly what it is. And then, then you can have your discussion on what you think of some of these things. So mental health services, that's a concept county-wide that's being discussed related to mobile health crisis, additional services, and so on. The county came up with a really rough estimate based on population, similar to homeless. Like it would run for three to five years. And so our share, if we participate in that, there'd be tons of details to be worked out. But the concept, I think everyone's on board with the concept, but our share would probably be something like $50,000. Small business grants, that, that has to do with a couple of things. It's just, if, if you want to continue to provide grants to small businesses, that's, that's one thing. The county might put together a county-wide program, maybe there's a contribution to there. Something to think about for small businesses is that you can use money to help on the outdoor spaces related to small businesses. You may be able to probably use money if you kept outdoor spaces and you need to pay for cleaning or maintenance. That's probably an eligible expense. Maybe it's an eligible expense if you wanted to put a portable toilet downtown for people using downtown. That could probably be an eligible expense. So that's a concept under small business, whether it's directly or related to something to help businesses. Administration, that has to do.
Just one quick question. At least from what I've seen, there isn't any grants coming from the state for small business. The money that's coming out is for rental assistance, and huge money for rental assistance to pay 100%, not 80%, et cetera. So we had our small business grant program, and I know the businesses are doing well now, but I don't think that they've recouped their hit. So I would also like us to think more about doing that small business grant program. There was the $1,000 grants to help some of them recoup what they lost during, during COVID.
So Barbara, I think we're all going to want to chime in. I thought he just wanted to go through the list, because I have some insight on this one too. But are we just going through the list and then talking about them, or are we talking about each one?
I, I prefer to go through the list just to touch on it, because it, it's just, just so then you can go back and actually decide what you want to do. Administration, that actually has to do with our time. So it's an eligible expense to track the funds. However you allocate it, to administer the funds, to manage the funds of your managing grant programs. So those are all eligible reimbursement costs. So that's just a placeholder number. We just put in 25,000. Obviously, we have no idea what administrative costs. And that includes if we hire someone from outside to do this. Rental assistance. Now, obviously, you did a rental assistance program. You put money out there. What this is, is since anything after March 3rd, 2021, is eligible for reimbursement, thought pattern would be that any grants made since then would actually be reimbursed with these monies. So you would use the part of these monies instead of our general fund monies that we provided to St. Vincent's and the Ritter Center. At, at this time, I actually don't have an, an updated sheet for what they've done since then. So that's something we'd have to work on, but that's the concept, to use the recovery funds and not your general funds. Storm drain repairs, that has to do with the thing on Broadway. Premium pay, premium pay has to do with you can pay essential government workers premium pay during COVID, whether they had to work during COVID or some other. Um, premium paid during COVID, whether they had to work during COVID or some other things. There's some caveats to that. Um, one of the caveats that's really limiting is it's limited to a hundred and fifty percent of the county average wage. It doesn't tell you how to figure out what the county average wage is. It just says it's limited to a hundred and fifty percent of the county average wage. Number I've seen out there is like twenty one dollars is the average county wage on hourly. So a hundred and fifty percent of that would be like thirty two dollars or uh, whatever, thirty one fifty or whatever it would be. So that's more of the limiting thing. The other thing is that, you know, you if you tell a work during that timeframe knowledgeable, although if you come back into the office and provide services, there's probably an argument there, but I just have it there so you could see it. The other thing, what's interesting for lower income households, you actually could put something like home repairs or weatherization um, for work that, you know, need to be done that they couldn't do because of COVID nineteen because they didn't have the resources. Other just has to do with, that just is, if you wanted some other categories or you wanted to start punching in things into the spreadsheet. And then just based on these rough proposed allocations, not the final, just what we had in there is that totaled out to, you know, five hundred and sixty three thousand. You're working with nine hundred, so you had another two hundred and thirty seven thousand to play around with if you thought these categories were were adequate. And then down here is all the restrictions that we had talked about. So with that, that's pretty much the staff report. So when you start getting into more of your prior discussion, I could put the regular spreadsheet on the screen. And then I just enter whatever numbers if you want to see what it looks like and you'll get um, actual feedback on what's left, what's remaining and how it's allocated.
So can I, um, I just want to throw out an idea that I was looking online for things that the money could be spent on. And along with, it says uh, the development of affordable housing. So this line item says investments in housing in neighborhoods through homelessness assistance, which we've already got something there. The development of affordable housing, the provision of housing vouchers, which is in ours. Housing navigation assistance, not ours, indoor residential counseling. But I'm not sure what we could do with development of affordable housing, but that is something that appears to be possible for for spending this kind of money. So I just wanted to throw it out there and I couldn't think of something we could do for a reasonable amount of money, but perhaps others can.
And um, I'm wondering whether perhaps we should go to public comment at this point and then come back and continue with this discussion to to hear the public's ideas. If that's all right, then Michelle, can we go ahead and see whether we have anyone here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, right now I don't see any hands raised, but the mayor has just opened public comment. If anyone has a comment, this is the time. And you're limited to three minutes, although we don't have a timer, I'll be looking on my phone.
Okay.
Um, okay, I see one hand raised and that is Walt Vernon. Both two hands, followed by Jody Timms. So Walt, I have unmuted you.
Oh, Walt. Great, thanks. I don't know if I get three or five, but I represent the Climate Action Committee. Um, I was just going to suggest from the perspective of the Climate Action Committee, uh, the idea of home weatherization, which is pretty easily, and and just in full disclosure, I've read the Federal Register, so I know what the law says. I'm not sure what your guys' rules are.
Do you guys hear a banging in the background? I can't hear.
All right, I have construction going on. Okay, is this better?
Yes.
Okay, now I'm on headphones. So um, so I like the, I like the idea of the weatherization. I think that's a really powerful idea. Um, it certainly supports the climate goals. You know, many of the of the comments we've gotten on the Climate Action Plan have been, how is a poor person supposed to afford to do this kind of stuff? And so if we could take some of this money and help our people to weatherize and reduce their ongoing energy costs, I feel like that's a win for everybody. So I would put that at the top of the list. Um, the second thing that I would point to is, uh, you know, there's a lot of talk in here about investments in water and sewer. Again, I've been reading the Federal Register to see what they say about the eligible uses. Um, we clearly have a water crisis in this county. Um, and one of the things that, you know, we have tried to encourage is the use of gray water systems at homes. And one of the things I hear over and over again is, well, we can't afford it. Who, you know, even the um, the water districts requirements talk about if feasible. And so that if feasible thing has to do with money. And I think that we could design a really strong program to help our residents install gray water systems, which would again be very powerful um, support for the people of this town and certainly for the climate and the situation that we're in with water. So I would highly recommend addressing that. The last thing, and this one's maybe slightly far afield, but it, you know, I I we are permitted to address negative economic impacts, including assistance to workers and families. We are permitted to serve the hardest hit communities and families, including investments in housing. One of the things that we want to do on the Climate Action Committee is to create some kind of a co-op that allows uh, the residents of the town to invest in renewable energy developments for lower income people. Um, with some, and and this kind of money could be a seed fund for a program like that where we would invest in programs, the residents would pay for the energy. The money that came back could then be used to reinvest in future projects. And so it could be a continuing source of improvement um, to help the those who can't afford to do this kind of thing and want to be part of the green economy. Um, and and we've even designed a program that allows them to invest in it themselves and profit from it. And so again, I think it could be a really, really powerful win-win situation for the people of our town and for the climate. And I would be delighted to work with you to help design and administer any such programs. So thank you.
Thank you, Walt.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jody Timms.
Uh, good afternoon, council members. I don't actually have much prepared, but I I'm very interested in this conversation. Obviously, it's an amazing opportunity for us to think creatively uh, about our needs as a community. And I just want to mention that I would love to do some more brainstorming with the Age Friendly Task Force on how we might be able to potentially um, support some of our most vulnerable folks um, by age and ability in Fairfax in this next year or two or or beyond. Um, and also potentially look at some intergenerational projects or two. So um, again, I don't have any concrete proposals, but I just wanted to mention that um, we do have our two facilities in town that house um, affordable housing for our older adults. Those residents may have some needs that they're um, you know, that the that Mercy Housing and RCD are not able to provide for them. So my mind is just spinning on potential ideas, but I just wanted to mention. Um, I think for our low income folks, our older adults, our folks with with limited abilities in town, it would be really advantageous for us to spend a little time thinking about how we might spend or might use twenty thousand or some some small amount, but that might be supportive. And also, as I say, involve younger folks of all ages really and get a more intergenerational. That's a direction we've wanted to go in and just really haven't had um, resources and ideas concretely. So thank you. I just wanted to mention that. I appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you.
I do not see any more hands raised. Um, if you want to close public comment.
You can close public comment then. Thank you for those comments and continue our discussion. Yeah.
Um, can I ask a question of uh, process here? Um, is so I I never really, I I haven't really understood sort of what it is that we're trying to accomplish today and how the process is going to be moving forward in terms of community input. Because um, I I think it's important that we hear from more than two people um, what their priorities might be in this. So I'm just curious, Garrett, can you um, sort of lay out how you see this coming back to us for a more um, a more public uh, discussion?
So I I think the only reason for having this workshop was to have something before I left. I think that was primary reason. But I always envisioned the process is this. You would start this discussion, you'd come up with some allocations to extend if you could. Uh, and then before you did anything, it would still have to come back to a regular council meeting for for approval on how you think you can allocate it, knowing that it is, as uh, Council Vice Mayor Hellman indicated, living documents dynamic. You could change it at any time. You could figure out if you wanted to do questionnaires or have more input from the community on things. For example, it it's really broad categories. So for example, if you said, as Jody indicated, let's set aside X amount of dollars for programs to benefit lower income seniors or disabled, you could just have a plug number there and then say, and we'll have a process determine what kind of programs we think that could be eligible and figure that out in the future. So you have time to figure out these things. This is more of, do you want to allocate money to specific categories? With the only exceptions being lost revenue, that's clearly a category that we think it's there, it'd be good if you said, the council said, yeah, that's good, that's around that number. Um, or whatever it's ultimately going to be. And then the storm drain pollution stuff, I think that's clearly eligible. You know, that's pollution control devices. And then I think the argument could be make the storm drain on Broadway, that's eligible. And so you've kind of allocated the funding by category, so you know what you're generally working with.
Well, I'm I'm ready to say right now that the lost revenue is a great idea because it gives us total flexibility in spending it. And so there's really, other than if there's any problem with that, which I don't see, the only issue is just that primarily Michael would would get into the numbers in more detail and come up with a figure that's defensible. And so I I see no reason why we wouldn't include that. That's line of the spreadsheet seems done and good to me. The other allocation that is one of those specific projects and allocations, and we do need to think about them and then go to the public and think about them before the public at a general meeting.
Uh, you know, I I was going to add that another thing that seems really quite obvious and quite um, imminent is the extra need for more janitorial, more maintenance, more sanitation um, in our public facilities, because we'll be going back to full capacity in classes and rentals. And we know we're going to have that expense. And we're also going to have an expense downtown. In my mind, it's critical that we do something about our um, lack of uh, toilet facilities downtown, as Garrett mentioned. And I think it's a, it it's an opportunity here to take that more seriously. We've always sort of shut it down and put it in the parking lot because we don't have um, the funds to do it or the personnel to go in and unlock them and then lock them. We've talked about this forever with the Chamber of Commerce. So I'd like to, you know, put that out on the table as something that this might allow us to move forward with. Um, whether it means hiring uh, a service that could actually open the ball field bathrooms and keep them maintained because they already exist and they're underutilized. Um, so anyway, I wanted to put that out there because it feels very um, very immediate.
Garrett, I had a, I had a quick question. The the um, the rental assistance line item that was in the um, the updated version. Remind me, was that, that's to reimburse monies that we've already allocated for that purpose?
Yeah, I think it would be reimbursing for any funds allocated after March third, twenty twenty one. I actually don't know if they have allocated any because I'm just waiting for information back.
Got it. So that in theory, Mayor, also similar to the the um, reimbursement of lost revenue might be seems like kind of like a no brainer is to to actually get that, recoup that money as well. I think the uh, Councilmember Kohler, your question about the small business grants, I didn't know if you were aware that I think like five weeks ago, Governor Newsom uh, announced or had a press release come out about um, allocating an additional one point five billion dollars for small business uh, grants, various types of relief.
However, that I am aware of that, but the difference in that money is it's going to be really competitive. And when we did our small business grants and probably a lot of hoops. When we did our small business grants, it was clearly just for Fairfax. It was a simple program of just a thousand dollars. And I do know that people who have been, you know, struggling to get state funding and federal money. It's just a nightmare. And so that's why I was throwing that out there. So I I did know about that, but thanks for the reminder. But I will say, I would also say, you know, call me crazy, but I think we need to meet the storm drain. I mean, we know that sewer stuff is a for sure. And we need to meet those state requirements. I don't know if a hundred thousand dollars is the right amount to meet those. I'm guessing that's an estimate, but we, I think that's a no brainer as well as the lost revenue. I think the homeless case management is, we already talked about that at some budget workshop or something, why don't we do that? And I also believe that we know it's a little bit premature, but we do know the fifty thousand for the mobile uh, crisis response unit is about good enough, so we should have that in there, so there's no going back on that. And then I would really argue that we need to deal with that storm drain on Broadway. And um, you know, I'm all about the infrastructure and that's really a problem. And I think we need to get an estimate on what it would cost to fix it. And I think for now, we should put in something like fifty thousand dollars just to have a plug number because we definitely need to commit to do that and not put that off another year until it does collapse completely and then we're in an emergency mode. So that would be my take. And as far as the bathroom and the ball fields, I don't think that's a problem. I don't know what that costs, but um, and I do like the idea of some sort of weatherization rebate. But I think that is, you know, again, with Garrett leaving and us going into an interim, I don't think we're going to be able to take on complicated new programs. But I think that's a definitely a good idea. And there probably is an easy way to do it. But right now, I I think the ones that I, you guys named off and I named off are ones that I would want to try to do. Thank you.
Um, could I ask, Garrett, what about a um, some kind of interim or trial period, maybe leading to a final selection of the same person for a uh, Public Works Director? Put that under administration to manage some of these projects that we're talking about. We're going to do infrastructure, we need somebody to do that infrastructure.
Well, it it doesn't matter who does it. So whoever does it, that's who you're charging the admin time for.
Uh huh.
If, so it's it's based on pretty much how it works is everyone has a time sheet and you mark on your time sheet how much time you spend on something. That's ultimately how we track it for FEMA and probably for this purposes. So it really just depends on the person, whether it's the manager, Public Works, your Public Works manager, Building Official, combination thereof finance, that's how we track it. So it's just what that actual time is.
To to use this this opportunity to our advantage in being able to get a a part-time or whatever Public Works Director in place and and get them going.
I kind of think that's a broader conversation. I think, I mean, just my two cents, Mayor, would be it's pretty difficult to have an interim handling a lot. We talked about having Rain Bush oversee the pavilion, which we know is pretty critical. And I think Wayne can fill in on some things, but I think we we really probably can't manage having two interims right now, in my opinion.
Um, Stephanie and Chance both have their hands up, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead. Stephanie. You're muted. You're both muted, actually.
Sorry, I'm just going to go down the line. Um, I'm in favor of bumping up that uh, storm drain improvements. Um, to encompass the Broadway. Um, I understood that's not in scope for that hundred. And then And then, you know, I came today very much hoping that we would support the mobile crisis um, expansion. So that's great. And then the small business grants and administration is something I wanted to talk about. So grants overall, we have, you know, upwards of five or six that are in some stage of um, being stood up, right? So we have the Firewise Grant, we have a Small Business Grant, Rental Assistance. RESJ, Racial Equity, Social Justice uh, Committee is looking at developing a grant to diversify our commercial sector and invite um, business owners of color, entrepreneurs of color. So what I'm getting at is I very much support, you know, I know there's a lot of concern about staff supporting this. And just to be clear, I'm not saying we do this all in the next like sixty days, but um, I'm very much in support of um, that administrative line item, um, bumping that up to support all of these grants that we're considering. I'm also very much in favor of this gray water systems. You know, there's, you can develop one to incent um, residents to just do the simple, you know, laundry. Um, hook up, if you will, to a gray water system, or there's a more complicated one. Um, but I, I do think we should look at that. This water shortage isn't going away anytime soon. Um, so I would love for us to opine on that and put a, a line item on some type of climate resiliency grant for um, our community. And then um, what was the other thing I wanted to say? I think that's it for now. Yeah.
Got it. Chance?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so it, it seems like at this point, um, based on the, the sheet that Garrett provided, that the majority of those things aside, outside from premium pay, it seems like there was still, Garrett wasn't even sure how we'd calculate the hundred and fifty percent of county average wage. But uh, the majority of those things on there, it seems like um, we're all in support of. And we could probably go ahead with those things. And it sounds like we don't have to have like a report out on how we spend a lot of this money until at least October. And so there'll be more time to deliberate on other things. Uh, I, I too am in support of, you know, we had the Climate Action Committee come to the Budget Workshop. And they had a, a bigger vision of monies aside from the, the, you know, eight thousand dollars that we bumped up to the, the ten thousand total, I think was the number. But they had a bigger package and it just wasn't fully um, worked through. And so whether that's, there's a, there's a water conservation element or water efficiency element or a home uh, efficiency element. I'm, I'm supportive of, of exploring that. It just feels like we need something more concrete before we can allocate a line item for a hundred K or however, however much we would want to go for that. Though I, I think it's a priority to bump up the climate, um, climate resiliency funding in the town. Uh, and then the other thing I was gonna say, same with um, whether it's small biz or, or the RESJ proposal for, for BIPOC or um, Black and Indigenous and People of Color owned businesses. Um, I, I'm in support of that too. I just, I think there's some, there's some of the mechanics for a couple of these things that it'd be, it feels a little premature to, to put line items for some of these things. Um, so I guess my wonder is if we're all good on the things that are currently there, then we can move forward with that. And then try to set some sort of schedule to have the CAC and the RESJ and other groups bring forward proposals. And Barbara, even yours, I, I, I'm suppo- I'm also supportive of figuring out how from this, this pool of money, we can create some sort of seed funding for some, some affordable housing project or some like the First Community Land Trust in Fairfax or something like that and get something off the ground. It's really interesting to me, and I think it'd be a great use of the money. It's just the details to iron out. Um, it'd be great if the Affordable Housing Committee could bring some, a proposal forward for the council to consider too. So those are just some thoughts, given where we're at, and I don't know if we'll be able to come up with some of these line items for the bigger projects at this time.
Thanks. Renee?
Um, yeah, I just also wanted to echo um, Stephanie and Chance in talking about the uh, climate resiliency and what Walt brought to us in terms of um, the gray water. Um, because this is an opportunity, it seems to me, uh, to partner with MMWD. As one of their point of focus is gray water. And they have, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe rebates and equipment and even workshops that they're, that they're bringing forward. So um, it might make sense at this point, you know, even though we're not going to break it down line item by line item at this point. Um, I think it would be important to see if we can, if we can partner with any of the agencies um, on any of this. Um, and get these, this assistance to residents who are ready to take either the, the smallest step in laundry to landscape or um, something more substantial. And then the other is, I, I hate to pass by this whole idea of the outdoor community spaces. Um, and that is because we may see some shifting in terms of our one sort of community space that we've created. So I'm wondering if um, you know, part of, part of what stops us from creating more of a communal space for people outdoors um, in our, in our public realm, is that we don't have anyone to maintain it. So along the same lines as, you know, maintenance and janitorial and keeping things clean. Um, I would like to propose that we allocate something so that if we can find, um, and we will be, we will be surveying uh, the community, polling the community about their ideas for this. Um, that we have some money to back it, uh, should we find an appropriate place. Um, so I, I, you know, I, I just don't want to leave that off the table at this point. Because um, we may be left with uh, with nothing and we're going to need to be creative.
Yeah, I would appreciate us, just in response to Councilmember Cutrana, nothing is set in stone here. This is a workshop. So I would appreciate us capturing what has all been shared. I'm not hearing any, anyone opposing anything here. So, you know, let's pencil in numbers. If they go up or down in our next session, we can make adjustments. Like, we're not voting on anything today. And I'd much rather have a list to share with the public and say, this is what we came up with. It's very early stages. We wanted to come to you rather than, you know, I mean, I'm, I like everything I'm hearing today. And it, I, I mean, in my experience doing this, you put in a number, you go back, you, you figure out the nuts and bolts of what it's really going to take. You update it for the, you know, final, final. But I'd like to see a more exhaustive list with some, you know, target numbers. This would be my preference.
Yeah, I, I agree. And if I can put in a, a, a couple of suggestions, I, I like Walt's suggestions very much. The weatherization, if we're talking about weatherization for residents, then that kind of goes to what Walt mentioned last, which is the possible seed funding for a program. And this would take some setting up of the program, but um, some sort of revolving fund where residents get uh, get money to be able to do energy improvements and greenhouse gas saving improvements in their residence. And we have a Fairfax fund to do that. So that's a, uh, I think a very interesting thing. And I wanted to throw out something uh, that I haven't heard yet, which is, and, and just um, agreeing with Stephanie, that I think what we ought to come out with this meeting is, is a list of, of these ideas, because they're all good ideas. And uh, and just to explore those ideas and figure out whether they're feasible and approximately what they would cost, how we would work with them. But just, here's a whole list of ideas. Nothing gets taken off the table at this stage. Um, and just see what we can come up with. So here's one more idea for the list, which is uh, would it be possible to work possibly with MMWD in any way to uh, to bring in more infrastructure for recycled water, for use in town facilities or um, parks, um, irrigating the redwood trees. That's uh, that's a possibility, something we've talked about in the past. And I know Larry talked about it a long time ago. So I just have no idea how close, how difficult that would be, what it would take. Um, but that would be, I think, a valid expenditure under this. So Garrett, are we capturing these ideas? Of course, we have a, we have a video here, but um, to pass on to our interim manager and continue this discussion. And, and Michael, I'm sure you're listening as well, but.
So I'm just writing it on the list.
Yeah.
In the actual spreadsheet, that's all I'm doing. And ultimately, at the end of this, if you want to change the allocations or do something, so you have something to talk about, it's fine. I just enter it and then you can see it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mayor, again, you have two council members.
Yeah, right, Barbara.
I think Chance's hand was up before mine.
No.
Go ahead. You go ahead.
Okay, alright. Alright, yeah, no, I just, I, I just wanted to clarify for um, Vice Mayor Hellman. I, I guess my point wasn't to say that we shouldn't be talking about some of these things, but like, the, at this point. But the question is, for me, is how could I uh, appropriately apply a certain or plug a certain number in for like, the gray water systems when I, I don't know. You mentioned two different levels of um, gray water systems that, that could be applied to homes. And I just don't know what either of those costs. So I don't know how to effectively create or build out a program that could satisfy a need in the community. Um, you know, what, if we allocate enough and it's like, you know, twenty-five K, but it serves three homes. It's like, I, I just don't know. So that was, that was the point I was trying to make, I think. Um, but the other question I just wanted to raise for um, Councilmember Kohler, I'm curious, you s- serving on MWPA, the Wildfire, Wildfire Prevention Authority. You know, one of the biggest risks that we're constantly hearing about is the wild. Curious, uh, if so, if we unlock some monies from the general fund by doing these reimbursements, um, does it make any sense to include additional money for um, for like home hardening and creating ember resistant zones or a, any additional funding for that kind of thing in the short term? Knowing that the sooner we do those things and roll that stuff out, the safer we'll be, uh, you know, for years to come?
Well, I think it makes sense. I'm not sure if, if that kind of stuff and Garrett or Mike may be able to help is actually eligible under these funds. But I think, for example, if all you do, just change the vents in your house. Mark Brown's uh, thoughts are, and I think he may have talked about this at MCCMC or MWPA, I forget. He lives in the Sky Oaks area in Santa Rosa, and that's something like seventy-five homes. And they were in the midst of the fire. And all but nine of those homes burned. And nine were gone. But he said they had put vents uh, in most of those homes. So if all you do is the vents, and there could be some kind of a program where um, we, I would like to see us partner, for example, MWPA is hiring some Grizzly students. Uh, Grizzly Corps, it's something like AmeriCorps, but it's a new thing. And um, maybe they could just go out and do it. And we could provide some funding to supplement their work, if it's eligible. So I think home hardening, I would say, um, you know, the, the thing that talks about home repairs, I would change that to say home repair, home hardening, weatherization, gray water. And just uh, Councilmember Goddard, MMWD has a hundred dollar rebate that they work through the Urban Farmer Store in Mill Valley for just the laundry to gray water thing. And so there might be some possibility of something like that to keep it simple to start, because that's easy for a lot of folks. And we could probably supplement those funds to give more. I don't know what those things cost. But uh, that might be something there. Um, the thing I wanted to add, uh, Councilmember Cutrana, were you done? Yeah, I would just say, I, I agree with what I think's been said, particularly the last things that Councilmember Cutrana said. I think we should, you know, one of the things we tend to do is ever evolving. And I think the things that are on this list, if, with the exception of, I would definitely argue for that um, Broadway stormwater drain to at least increase that to fifty for purposes of having a good starting list, is some of these things are no brainers. We should just go ahead and do them. The ones that we need to work on more, we can work on more. And actually, when you add up the money, there's still about three hundred thousand. So it's not that we're closing the door to hear more comment on this. And, and I'm not disagreeing with having a discussion at a council meeting. But some of these things are really no brainers. The Mobile Crisis Response Unit, the Homeless Case Management, the Storm Drain Pollution Control, the Lost Revenue. And I would argue that Broadway um, that Broadway Storm Drain that's collapsing are definitely for sure. And these other ones, just to put in some kind of a dollar figure to just get the ball rolling is a good way to go. So that we have something, we can say, well, we have a fairly good feel for this. We'll hear more about it. But I don't think we have to drag this out for, you know, five meetings. And I think some of the things that the Climate Action Committee wants to do, for example, are gray and RESJ. They may or may not be eligible for this money. So those are different discussions that have to deal with this budget. So I would like to see us get something out of this day today and have a list, at least we can have as a starting point. Thank you. Uh-oh.
Renee?
Uh, yeah, I just want to, I absolutely concur uh, with Councilmember Kohler. I, I would like to make sure that we, that we keep the um, downtown bathrooms on this list. It's a, it's a serious problem. And if we're talking about supporting our businesses, we have about two or three businesses that are supporting and paying for all the water. Um, with really all the town and their visitors um, using it. Um, so I, I really think it's important that we address it since we have the opportunity. So please keep that um, on the list, is my request.
So Garrett, do you want to share the list that you've captured so far?
Sure. So I'm gonna share my screen. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have the original stuff, then I added home repair, example, home hardening, weatherization programs. Water, because I just wanted to say water infrastructure, I did gray water, recycled water, and parentheses, climate resiliency. Outdoor spaces, that's where I put the restroom, janitorial, maintenance expenses, affordable housing, assistance programs.
And just one thing, Garrett, on the premium pay stuff. Um, why is the limit a hundred and fifty percent of cu- county average wage? I'm not sure. Did I miss that discussion?
That's the treasury, that's a treasury requirement. Those, those are in the interim guidelines.
So if you say that there are four thousand employees in the county, you take the average of their wages?
No, it's, no, it's not clear. It says average wage, so it's hourly. If you Google it for Marin County, because you could either do it for your county or the state, whichever is higher. So Marin County presumably is higher than the state.
Right.
And there's, there's no guidance on what's the magic no, source. The only source I saw, I was trying to use census data, like I said, I saw a number of twenty-one dollars an hour. So hundred fifty, that is whatever, thirty-one fifty, thirty-two fifty. No, thirty-one fifty.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. I, I probably missed that. And just like I saw yesterday as I was looking stuff up. And you mentioned that for teleworking, it's not eligible. And I think we should be kind of cautious as we do this to make sure that we don't get denied down the road. I mean, this could end up being something like some of the trials and travails of dealing with FEMA in the old days, right?
Yeah, it, it could be. Uh, the only caveat here is, you know, they have ten thousand cities and towns nationwide. That they're gonna have to figure out how that all works, because it's, it'd be impractical for them to audit everybody. But yes, they will, the more records you have, the better record keeping, the better rationale you make when you submit. Whatever this online report's gonna look like, yes, that, that would probably make it so that, you know, you're not going to be subject to anything like that.
Okay. And so if this list is our list, can we see this at some point? And if it's in some kind of a staff report, can there be something in the staff? And if it's in some kind of a staff report, can there be something in the staff report about what the limitations are, the funding are so that, because I, I think it, you know, it's not crystal clear, obviously. But I think if we're going to have discussions for members of the community, at least having a backdrop of that there are limitations on this money. It can't be for everything we would all want, right?
So I, well, there are so many things. Uh, well, I can try to for July 7th, put something on that's just a report. Here's the broad categories. Here's the restrictions. You're going to have future workshops to talk about it. I mean, I could do that.
Well, and I, I can send you, I, I put together a document that really has some nice line items from mega cities and stuff rather than a deck that you can look at and see if any of it's useful.
If, if I, I like the idea of doing that, um, without creating too much work for you. Just to be really clear with the public, when I look at this worksheet. So we're calling them categories. I'm not sure if that's really what it is. They're more like projects or, and then the lost revenue, I think needs to be clarified for the public because that's not an actual expenditure. Or if you want to elaborate a little bit on what that is, because it's not, it's not.
It's an actual category. Actually, that one's the actual category. The other ones can fall into one of the, there's really just four categories. The others would fall in there. I guess these are descriptions that are eligible expenses. So sure, if we, you know, I think in the staff report.
But in the, in the lost revenue, what are we saying we're pointing that towards? That's what I'm saying.
Oh, the lost revenues, actually, there's a specific definition. So that'd be lost revenue. That'd be lost town revenue directly related to COVID. So but for COVID, we would have collected $250,000 more in town revenue. That's what that category is saying.
So I just wanted to ask that we put the things that Walt mentioned into, into the list there to, to think about. One being the revolving seed funding for a revolving fund to help residents with, with energy greenhouse gas improvements. And it could actually include gray water systems and certainly weatherization. But going forward to get the seed money and to get that fund going. And we might also be able to include some administrative costs. Because what I see as the main difficulty with that concept is it's going to require some real thinking to put it together. And so possibly being able to get some reimbursement for that, for that effort. That seems like a valuable thing. And maybe this could be the impetus to get it going.
Could you explain that a little bit more, Mayor, in terms of the seed money?
Yeah, the seed money idea is just about this, this particular funding option. But the, it's, it's been an idea that's, that started out being talked about when we were talking about the microgrid on, in the CAC. The idea that actually the microgrid was a sort of a perfect example of it because we could get, if it was a private entity that was purchasing, say, the inverter for the pavilion, that private entity would get investment tax credit. But as a public entity, if we purchase it, we don't get the investment tax credit. So that's one way that it started out was if we had an entity that was a funding entity to, to be able to, to do things, people could contribute to that, you know, if they wanted to. And the town, if the town ever decided to do carbon offsets so that we would be greenhouse gas neutral in that sense, then that, those offsets could go into that fund rather than going to another carbon fund somewhere out of town. It could go basically into our own carbon fund that was used to help residents make improvements. So it, the, that was sort of the idea of, 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 and it needs a lot of working out. It definitely, it's a financial instrument that would, like any financial instrument. There's a lot of details that would need to be, need to be thought about.
I'd prefer that they're isolated because there's three different ones and I'd rather not lump them all together would be, I think.
Yeah, the, the home weatherization, the gray water and that co-op are sort of.
I would suggest that I don't think that a revolving loan fund is something that would be a good idea for this funny funding because you have to use the funds. By 2026, it would be very difficult to keep track of all that. That may be another area for something different. But I don't think you want to set up a revolving loan fund with this money that if you don't use it by 2020, December 2026, you have to give it back. So I just think that would be hard to track. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but I don't think for this money, it's a great idea to throw something like that in there. I think you'd be better off with the grant ideas where you're actually expending the money and you easily, you can more easily track it. But those are my two cents.
Okay, we are getting pretty close here. We wanted to, to end by five and be, uh, be ready to go into our, I'm just making sure that I've got my numbers straight to go into the closed session. And so, uh, any further thoughts? And then we, one thing we have to do in this open session is to take public comment for the upcoming closed session. So we'll do that as well.
Garrett could send us that chart because I was trying to take notes and I've made a huge mess on mine.
Good idea. I'd love to see the, the chart as it stands now.
Okay, we, uh, we could do that. Um, so what we'll do, it sounds like for the council is we'll put together this broad list of what we have. Um, and then put that on for July 7th, just as a report. And how about your process will be moving forward.
Okay.
Just one quick, quick clarification, Garrett. The, the 33,000 allocated for the case management will come separately on the 7th for actual approval, correct?
Right. So anything that requires approval, that would be brought to you separately. But the 7th, you'll have the homeless stuff. And then the storm drain improvements, pollution control devices, that's actually in the budget. That's, that's a hundred grand. Uh, storm drain on the list, I put in 50 within our town budget. You know, the improvements for that would have been wrapped into one of the CIP projects for addressing that. But what will happen is we'll have, we'll have this number there. So at least we know when we actually approve a contract, assuming it's a seed spot. In essence, most likely the cost will have to come back to the council for that specific costs for storm drain repair on Broadway. So that time, then you can also formalize the actual allocation of the money to it.
Again, process question. You, you said that this can be revisited. Is there an official way that our list needs to be amended or how does that work? Time, timeline?
Well, I, I think it's just a matter of the council wants to talk, what meetings you want to talk about it. You'll put it on for July 7th. You could either decide to have another special workshop or do it at another council meeting as you want to further refine the numbers. Or you may do things like, I'll make this up. You may direct the Climate Action Committee to, whatever, noodle up and propose some type of program related to, I'll make this up, grants for home repair, weatherization, or grants for home hardening, or, or whatever. You always have that option so that a group can come back to you with a more defined program. And then as the council, you could take action, say, that sounds good. We'll allocate this amount of money. And just to be clear, any cost to administer a program, whether it's by staff or you hire an outside firm, that's all eligible for reimbursement. That's all eligible for the use of funds. So don't think that you're restricted for some way or another to have, hire somebody to create a program.
Yeah.
Could we not put a whole discussion on this on July 7th? Cause I understand that agenda is quite packed.
That's what I was going to ask. Are you proposing we put it on consent just as a?
It's just a report.
Just report, but not, please, it's already going to be a long meeting.
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest for a discussion, but it's a report. And within the report, it'll say, you know, that your direction is you're going to need to schedule either for future special workshop, study session, or another meeting to really talk about the details and how you want to proceed with some different aspects of it.
I guess let's be clear. Do we want to piecemeal this? So, you know, climate action is going to come with different proposals that we approve. You know, or do we want another working session for, you know, collective public input? Like what, what's the approach we want to, I see value in doing both, honestly.
Uh, my recommendation is you have another meeting. And within that meeting, you get your public input and you decide how you want to proceed with some of those different items.
And then the parties that are working to fine tune the numbers come prepared with the, yeah.
Ideally.
Yeah.
And then the numbers, just so I completely understand this, the numbers can be amended. Let's say we allocate 50,000 for the mobile crisis unit and we need to allocate 25 more. This is all, this is all a, a, a working, a working.
Yes, it's, yes, because the actuality is your actual loss revenues for revenue. Once Michael refines those numbers, then that number is going to be different than the 250, either plus or minus. It's just going to be whatever it is.
Okay, we're saying that the eligible expenses are expenses that were made after March 3rd, 21. That also applies to the second tranche of funding, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, there's not another.
Yeah. And the only reason I'm recommending you just deal with the 900 now is because you know, you have that. It's, you know, if you have to deal with 1.8 million, I think that'd be too hard right now. You have time to deal with that.
It'll probably come in another fiscal year too. But I think the other thing I would just say is with the idea of doing another meeting is also that groups that want to propose ideas should actually have them more worked out than concepts.
Yeah.
Cause I think there's this idea that a concept is a good idea, but I think the group should look into a little bit more of how they would actually work. Not just come with a money request so that, you know, that's where the brain trust is apparently. And so I think that would make it easier too.
Yep.
But there's no, there's no, the October date is just how you spent it. It's, we don't have to report by October how we planned to spend it. Is that right?
Yeah, that's, that would be my impression. My impression is you're just putting a report, here's what we spent. If there's a category of what you think you'll spend it on, you put that in. But the reality is you can change it all the way up till you have to obligate it by 2024 and then just spend it by 2026. So
Yeah.
I think, I think this one is you have a lot of flexibility and ultimately how this works.
Thank you, Garrett. This has been very helpful and it's a good position to be in. Okay, so if we're ready to move on to the second item on this meeting's agenda, which is to take public comment in advance of the closed session that's coming up, which will be on personnel matters. Do, Michelle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to clarify, you're opening the public comment on the closed session item. And if anyone has a comment to make on the closed session item, now is the time. I don't see anyone raising a hand.
Okay. Okay, we'll close public comment period on the, on the closed session item. Thank you. All right. Are we ready to adjourn this meeting?
Yeah, you'll be adjourning in the closed session.
Counsel, yeah, we're journeying into closed session. So council members, we have another link for that and we'll just see you in a minute.
Can we take five minutes in between, please?
Yeah, 4:30.
Okay, thank you.